I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you. All right, next we'll have the invocation, and we have Pastor Darren Schroeder with the Godly Church of Christ.
Let's pray, please. Our Father, we are so thankful that we can bow before you on behalf of our community that is so dear to us, and we pray your richest blessings upon the community and upon the school district here. Father, at this time, we thank you for every staff member here. We thank you for the superintendent, for the board, for each and every teacher, for every bus driver, for every single staff member, and for what they do, what they mean to so many. Father, we pray your rich blessings on them, their work, their families. Father, we especially pray at this time for each and every student at Godly. Father, they are very important to us, but we know that they are each so very precious in your eyes. Father, we pray your blessings on every one of them. We pray for their work here as students. We pray for their growth. We pray for their homes that they are from and for their future homes. We pray, Father, that you will be there for them each and every step of this life. Father, we pray that you will give them wisdom. We pray that you will keep them safe. And Father, we pray that each of us can in some way be a blessing unto them. Father, may your will be done in all things. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Darren. Next, we'll move into recognition, and we have the Godly ISD College Board students.
Good evening, Board. So we're excited. The National College Board has started a new program where kids can qualify what's called Big Future. They apply, and the Big Future helps them find scholarships and applications to colleges after they take certain tests along the way. One of the ones they take as juniors is the preliminary SAT test. It's called PSAT. They can take it as freshmen and sophomores, but junior year is when it counts, and they get entered into the National Merit Scholar Competition Program. And it's a very competitive program. You know, there's about 1.5 million students across the country that take the PSAT their junior year. This year, we had seven students qualify for a new program that they were doing, that is the Small School Rural Town Award. Their PSAT was high enough, coming from a small school, that they received designation and distinction for that. We had one other student that also received the Hispanic recognition, because he is a Hispanic student, so he gets recognized for that as well. And then we had one final one that was really the coup de grace of all of them. I have had one since I've been here as high school principal. This is my second, but he is known as a commended scholar, which means he scored in the top 50,000 of the 1.5 million across the country, which puts him in the 95th percentile across the country. He did not make semifinalists, unfortunately. We were notified September 13th that he didn't make it to semifinalists, which is the top 16,000 of all those 50,000 now. And then the finalists are about 8,000 beyond that, that they get a scholarship or competition for a scholarship beyond that. But just making it in the top 50,000 is an outstanding accomplishment for that one student. Most of these boys are involved in other leadership programs, and that's where he is tonight. He is the section leader for the band in percussion, and they are performing right now. So losing your percussion leader would probably make the band stop for a little while. So he is out at practice. His name is Thomas Zack, so he's not here tonight, but we do want to recognize him. He was our commended scholar this year, so we're very proud of him. We recognized him at the pep rally on Friday afternoon, and then Mr. Metter did a nice write-up for him for that accomplishment. So we're excited to see what he does. Also not here tonight, we have two other students that won the Small School Award. Camden Flood is also out with the band, and he's doing the brass section leader. And then Jared Ilitch has basketball tonight with the Fall League Basketball, so they are gone. But we do have four of our other boys, so we want to recognize them as they come across the stage. So we have Mr. Jackson Harry. We have Mr. Jake Pimsel. We have Mr. Owen Ramberu. And Mr. Zack Blinko.
At this time, we extend the opportunity for the public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. Did we have anyone wishing to address the Board at this time regarding a specific item on tonight's board agenda? We did not. Next, we'll move into superintendent reports.
All right, we'll start with construction update. Start with S and P.
Godly High School, Phase Two update. So here we are putting AC handlers on top of the building, working towards getting some air in there soon so we can move forward on flooring and other things that need climatization. We've got most, we should be getting, actually, we've got a load of wall panels today, so those will start going on. There's the front. So the front of it, up at the very top, we've got scaffolding up there trying to finish all this out. That'll have wall panels on it as well. And where you see the crane on the left side, we're putting in the stairs over there, which we just call the South Stairwell. On the inside, well, there's the north side. So the same thing, so that's like insulation to help the building heat and stay heated and cooled before the wall panels are shown, as well as we've, you can see the dirt's kind of grated there. So we're going to start with that forming the paving over there. So this is the second floor. So you can see we're installing wall tile. We're doing finishes. We're actually on the third floor texturing and painting, which that's that up there. Finishing mechanicals, just odds and ends. On the fourth floor, it's a little bit behind the third floor. I mean, yeah, behind the third floor, but everybody's moving up. And here in probably a week or so, it'll look like the third floor did. The connector, we poured that about two weeks ago. So that, you come out of the South Stairwell or the second floor of the CTE or the Wild, and you can walk all the way to this patio over here. We've got a pour in the morning at five, which will be some more surface area down here on this end. So that is F. So that's just right outside this building here. We'll probably pour that on the first of next week. I think next, we might even pour it Friday. We've got a couple up in the air, a couple of pours, but we've got to get that down. That's, just seeing that yellow and just the rebar, there's a lot of work underneath it that people don't see, but it's kind of fun to show. The arena, we're working on the roof, trying to get dried in. So that's the east side. That's where we moved out. So we've already got our precast set there, and we're working on closing the roof and then coming down and closing the walls so we can be watertight there and keep moving forward. There's a good picture of it. So that's the east down there at the far end, what I was talking about. So we've got, the scaffolding on the left is what we worked to get all of our mechanicals up close to the rafters up there. So we'll have one, the one on the south side, this is north, the one on the south side we're working on now. And then we'll put one on the east side so we can just keep moving forward. Questions?
Yes, sir. Question we normally ask, substantial completion for the CTE?
Yes, the contractual is 121923 for the CTE, and the arena is 315. We've been working hard on the schedule. We know that we've got a long ways to go, but we've got all the good team that we need over there, and we're working hard to keep moving up the schedule at all times.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Have questions? Thank you, James. Now we'll hear from Reader in the Fine Arts Wing.
All right, Jeff Stevens with Reader, here to talk about Godly High School, Phase Three. So this was last month, looking at the storm shelter. This was, I think, Thursday of last week, looking at the storm shelter. That's when they finished setting all the precast panels. I kind of like to do a little before and after. So this was last month, looking from the baseball fields towards the south elevations. And then again, this was Friday. See, the shelter was, or at least the structure, the precast structure for the storm shelter is complete. Another before and after. This one, you can see a little bit more of the steel. Last month, we had a lot of the CL and I up, a little of the art room area steel. And then as of Friday, I guess, all of the structural steel's up, we're detailing, checking. And then finally, I have something to take some interior photos of. So this is the CL and I, looking back towards, I guess, the north, back towards, you know, the high school parking lot. And then this is from the exterior door looking in. This was last Friday also. We have a lot of the interior framing up. We're fireproofing. We're doing above-ceiling MEP is the main focus right now. And then this is a view looking back towards the temporary wall. If you're in our addition, looking towards the temporary wall, kind of towards where the serving line and kitchen is going to be. And this is not a very good photo, but it's from the interior of the storm shelter. Right now, it looks like a massive space. It'll be cut up soon enough with walls, most of them are CMU walls. Storm shelter, next steps, we've got to do all the underground plumbing and then pour a slab. And this is the other bay of the storm shelter. And that's it for the photos. So like I said, we're working through above-ceiling MEP. Got a lot of interior framing going, a couple, and then probably late next week, we'll start roofing on the entire building, and that's a big milestone for us. And then we have an awesome video that I did not take.
Do we have any questions for Jeff at Fine Arts?
Substantial completion date?
January 24th, the 24th.
January, I'm sorry, what?
24th, the 24th.
24th, thank you.
Do we still think we have a shot to get in the CLI portion after the Christmas break?
I do. That's what we're pushing for. I mean, that makes the most sense. It's about the only time we can come in and tear down that wall and finish all our tie-ins.
Okay.
So Dr. Deere, associated with that construction, when do we start working our plan for being able to put students into that area and utilizing that space while that will be after the beginning of the next semester? How do we do that without interrupting classrooms?
Using the CLI portion that we hope we're going to get in, that's what we're talking about? I'm sure Mr. Flood is-
And the remainder of the Fine Arts Wing.
I'm sure Mr. Flood's been working on that.
I'd love to hear that plan from Mr. Flood.
Yes, sir. And I know they would love to have that space, especially during lunch, to ease a little pressure.
Yes, sir. So the nice part about that space is, you know, it's lunch, and it's for buses after school. So it's really pretty simple to just kind of, once it's open, to set a few parameters of how kids can go in and out, with us directing, the APs working with them on buses after school and things like that, to get kids in and out of there. What we're hoping for additionally is they might even open up some of our art classrooms and our choir space. And if that happens, then it'll be really nice, because we can move Miss LeBeau over here. And the furniture is going to be supposed to be installed and everything done by the end of December, so that when that opens up, the art teacher can move directly over here with her stuff. Yeah? Did you grunt? Okay. I was like, wait a second. It would be early, it'd be ahead of time, but, you know, we're hoping we can get in that fast. You know, the storm shelter is going to need all its time to get done in January. But it's a pretty small space. It's not disrupting a lot of things here. The Wild is obviously a lot bigger project that Nikki and I are working on. When that opens up, there will be a lot of moving pieces. But this space is going to be pretty nice, just moving somebody from the middle school and opening up a space for Mr. Fraser that they can use over there, so.
So at what point do you anticipate having a detailed plan of moving into the CTE and the Wild?
I mean, we have the same plan going a little bit for that right now, as far as like when furniture is arriving and starting to install furniture, and as long as all those dates are staying where they are, we can start moving into that. And then, you know, we'll start moving, as far as I know it, Nikki can help correct if wrong, but some of those CTE teachers that need to get into those spaces that are real specific to what they're trying to do, like the robotics classes, the health science classes, it'll open a lot of that up. And we have plans, like the stage will be our theater arts class. We'll move our theater arts teacher over here and put her on the stage in the high school so that we can use those spaces. So most of that furniture is being supplied and things. There's not a lot of movement or things that have to move necessarily. It's kind of the teacher getting their stuff and moving out there, and then just helping the kids train how to get out there, where their new classes are, a lot like the first day of school. So our kids are pretty resilient. They pick up stuff pretty fast. You know, one of the nice things about this building, the way it is, is you can see the numbers on the side of the room relatively easy, because they're huge and big. So it's not hard to go identify where those go, and that's one of the nice things about the way it's built. So pretty simple. If all the furniture gets here and gets installed, you know, appropriately, it's just kind of moving in, so.
I'll say it's not pretty simple. I'm working on the details of it. I appreciate you, Mr. Flood. But there is a lot of furniture. We have that all scheduled for delivery the week of December 20th, with install happening from December 20th till the first week of January. And we've tentatively scheduled for teachers to be able to come in that week of January and use those professional development days, the week of January 8th, that we come back to really set up and establish classrooms in the new spaces. And then we've already started ordering, furniture has been ordered with a delivery date set, and we've already started ordering any equipment that we can and have space to store. Cameras, additional computers, that kind of stuff are already on order to be delivered. And if kids can use it now, we'll use it now and just move it over, or we'll store it in a space until the building's ready for it. So there's a little bit more to it than that, yes. It is easy, well. It's easy with our support.
And Dr. Block, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you moved in half, you know, half-year. It felt like the kids and the teachers were excited, and they were listening, and they were pretty much doing what you asked them to do, and it-
And our kids are extremely excited to be able to be in those spaces, especially our seniors. So I think if we ask them to pick a box up and carry it across the way, they will more than willingly do that, especially if that means they get to function in the new spaces that have been provided to them.
Yeah, that's probably my biggest concern, is we got seniors that have been looking forward to it. We want to give them the maximum amount of time in our wonderful new facility.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Mr. Templeton give us our updated demographic report.
Good evening, Board President, members of the Board, Superintendent Deere. It is my pleasure to be with you this evening. Tonight, I'm going to give you the update from our demographic report that we completed just recently. I'm going to start by talking about the big-picture economic conditions. We like to look at the unemployment rate, because it kind of gives us how the economy is moving along. You can see back in March of 2020, that's when the pandemic caused the unemployment rate to shoot up to over 12, almost 13%. Then we saw the unemployment rate really drift back down closer to that percent range, which when you're at 4%, you're basically fully employed. And the DFW region does continue to be one of the strongest regions in the country for job growth, which is continuing to lead to population growth. So the state of Texas is still the number-one state in the country for population growth. Those are 2022 numbers that I'm referring to. And so all in all, very strong population growth. And when we look at the DFW metroplex, the unemployment rate in '23 was right at 4.2%. That's August of '23. Johnson County, right at 4.1%. And again, that's almost fully employed. Now, I want to talk about some of the local things that are happening, which do have a significant impact, which is the improvement in mobility. So highway improvements, there's a loop that's proposed to go around Crescent, a bypass loop for 377. That'll also improve some accessibility and mobility. There's also an expansion to the east of U on Highway 1187, which will create some increased mobility. But I was pleasantly surprised, I left my office at 4:00, 4:15 this afternoon in South Lake, Texas, and I got here in one hour, which, at that time of day, it's the 183 corridor that always gives me the little bit of concern, but it really flowed pretty well. And so mobility is a big factor, the ability to get to where the jobs are, the ability to get to certain places, and it is getting better. And so it's getting better. The chism toll was actually how I came down, chism toll. And so that toll is pretty heavy, or it's got a lot of traffic on it at that time of day. Now, I want to talk about some big-picture things that are happening. This map is the state of Texas school districts. We've got over 1,000 school districts in Texas. Last year, the fall of 2022's enrollment number for the state was 5.5 million kids enrolled in Texas schools. Last year, the state's enrollment grew 92,000 kids. That was the biggest number that we've seen in over 20 years. So part of that was the COVID return, but it also is that continuation of population moving into the state. It's the continuation of some of that COVID return. And so all in all, very, very strong year this past year. Now, when I zoom into the DFW region, this is a five-year thematic map based on the enrollment change between 2017 and 2022. You can see the darkest red school districts are the fastest-growing school districts in the DFW region. Those do tend to be more in the northern parts of the DFW metroplex. But we've got very strong growth in the south, also in the western areas of Alito, of Crowley, and certainly Godly, I've outlined in blue. As you can see, that we've got strong growth all around the DFW ring. Now, I want to talk about the overall housing market, because the housing market is definitely cloudy right now. And when I say it's cloudy right now, it's because of the rising interest rates. This map is showing the annualized, single-family starts, new starts, going all the way back to 2013. That's the dark purple line. The light blue line, or the turquoise line, is the annualized closings. And you'll notice that prior to 2020, prior to 2020, the starts and closings stayed very close together. So builders were starting homes, they were closing them within a three- to four-month period. The market was very healthy. We didn't have any supply chain challenges. Labor was in a pretty good spot. And then in the spring of 2020, when the pandemic started, that's when we saw that separation of starts and closings. The starts accelerated, the closings lagged behind. The reason the closings lagged behind was because of the increased times of construction. Construction times went up dramatically, and that was a result of supply chain challenges, shortages of labor, and that's led to this kind of construction gap. Now, the closings have lagged, but then you'll also notice in about the spring, summer of 2021, that's when we were at our peak of building over 50,000 single-family homes across the DFW metroplex. That's also when the Fed started raising the interest rates. So the Fed started a very gradual increase in the interest rates. You may remember they were raising them at a quarter at a time, every few months, quarter, quarter up. Now the interest rates are close to 7%, and there's thoughts, some rumors or thoughts, that it may go up again another quarter point. I think we're near the peak of where that is. It may go up one more time, but it's not going to keep going up. We're still at about 40-year highs on this current interest rate at about 7%. Now, you'll notice the closings, the turquoise line, is still holding. The reason it's holding is because we had that inventory. We had all of that buildup of homes under construction, some finished vacant. So the builders have been moving that inventory through, offering some discounts, offering some incentives to help with that. So the closing number has held at about 47,000 across the DFW metroplex, but the start rate has dropped back down to about 42,000. When we did our study, it was about two summers ago. It was '21 when we did our study. That's when that housing market was in that upward trajectory, and I was a little more optimistic at that point. Now, my numbers, I've got two projections that I'll show you toward the end of the presentation. One is slightly conservative, based on what we're seeing right now. And then one is a little more optimistic. At some point, we could see these interest rates go down. I don't think they're going to go down in the near term, but within the next 24 months, they certainly could start to work their way back down. This, all in all, has been an attempt by the Fed to orchestrate what they're framing as a soft landing. So they're trying to get a soft landing on these economic, high economic inflationary times. We'll see. This is showing total home sales within the Godly ISD boundary. Again, you can see it peaked in 2022. You can see, year-to-date in 2023, it's definitely down, so definitely down in 2023. This is January to June of '23, so about a half a year. So if we were to kind of keep moving along, this would put us at around that 500 to 550 pace for 2023. The average prices, I know this is kind of hard to believe. It still catches me by surprise that the average price for a new home within Godly has gone up significantly, but it is matching what we're seeing across the DFW region. So the prices as a whole have really gone up. In 2022, it was 424,000 was the average price for a new home within Godly ISD. Year-to-date in '23, it is softening just a little bit. So we've seen a little softening. I expect that softening could continue to happen again because of these higher interest rates, a little bit of hesitancy on some of the buyers, so we may see some softening there. Average price for an existing home sale is holding at about 433,000. Now, we've interviewed the builders, we've interviewed the city, we've interviewed the county, we've interviewed and really done a big dive on the housing market. These are your current elementary attendant zones. These green shaded areas are the active subdivisions that are building single-family homes. The yellow shaded areas are the future subdivisions that are in the planning stages. Overall, with our clients, we have seen the developers kind of keep moving and keep developing even through this rising interest rates. I think for the most part, they already had their plans in play, they may have already had their land entitled and purchased, so they just have moved forward with those projects even with rising interest rates. All in all, we've got about 800 vacant developed lots ready for builders to build on. That's about in 28 active subdivisions. We have 22 futures that are totaling about 13,400 future lots. Now, that doesn't include the the ag land and some of the farmland that hasn't had some sort of due diligence started, but those futures are projects that we have seen either a concept plan or it's gone, it started through the city permitting process. So that means there is some movement or some planning on about 13,400 lots. Now, those can take several years. They're not going to show up all at once. I suspect we'll see deliveries of about 600 to 800, maybe 1,000 per year. It's all going to depend upon the pace of absorption. So ideally, there needs to be a two-year supply of vacant developed lots. Right now, we have about 800 vacant developed lots on the ground. So that's what led me to about a 400 to 500 home per year absorption was based on the vacant developed lot supply. Now, you know, things change quickly. You know, just two years ago, when the interest rate was 3%, we were seeing 50,000 homes across the DFW region. Now, it's down to 42,000, which is still really good. So I don't want to diminish that 42,000 is still the number one major region in the country for new home construction, but it is swinging to a more conservative number right now because of these interest rates being at about 7%. Now, I'll touch on some of the details. Silo Mills, very large, 2,800 total lots, 19 homes under construction when we did the research. They did have some finished vacant homes. We we saw about 10 finished vacant homes. And there is some groundwork underway on about 148 additional lots. Now, the developer anticipates building about 100 to 200 homes a year. We'll just see how that goes, but no doubt, still pretty optimistic about what may happen in Silo Mills. Now, Kate's Ranch is a newer development, 36 lots. It's a smaller development, 35 vacant developed lots. We saw one home under construction in Kate's Ranch. Now, we'll look at Wildcat Ridge, 435 total lots, eight homes under construction, 20 finished vacant homes that we saw during the research, building about 20 to 25 homes per year. Star Ranch, 484 total lots, 15 homes under construction, three finished vacant homes, building about 60 to 80 homes per year. And then there's a little new section there called Stillwater Lake Estates, 273 single-family lots. There is a multifamily section that has about 88 multifamily units. The groundwork is underway on all of the lots, and the construction on the apartments is also underway. Godly Ranch, 600 total lots, 24 homes under construction, 28 finished vacant homes, 35 occupied homes. The developer anticipates about 80 to 100 homes per year. And then we've got this future development called GG Land Investments, about 40 future lots. The groundwork is underway on all of those lots in that future land, GG Land Investments. There's a small section called Stewart Acres, 10 vacant developed lot or 10 total lots, four vacant developed lots, and five occupied homes with one finished vacant home. Next, we're looking at Rosemary Fields, 298 future lots. The groundwork is underway. Actually, I think it's going to be about during 2024, summer of 2024, is when we could start to see some construction there. The developer anticipates building about 80 to 100 homes per year. And we always put all those numbers together and then put our take on what the absorptions we built. The developers do tend to be rather optimistic on their numbers. So that's why we'll add them all up, look at the numbers, and then we look at our metro study data to see what the actual closings are to help us with that number as well. But we do share with you what the developers' ideas are about those communities. The Higher Lengths addition is 49 total lots, 45 vacant developed lots, it's just getting started, four homes under construction. Again, this research information was from a couple of months ago, so those numbers could be a little bit different now. Hadley Farms, 372 total lots, eight homes under construction with eight finished vacant. The developer anticipates building about 100 to 120 homes per year. Next, we've got a multifamily, couple of multifamily projects. This is just across the street from the high school, 88 multifamily units under construction, Stillwater Lake Estates. And then just down the road, there is a Craig Stamps RV Park. There's an expansion there that would add about 80 multifamily units to that development there as well. And that was just the highlights of that information. I do have details on the other information as well for the rest of the developments. I wanted to touch on the transfer patterns. This is from the Texas Education Agency. We don't have this year's transfer numbers. They won't become available until March of this school year. But the top table represents the transfers into the district, which is a total of 240 students during this past year. You can see that number has been around 256 in 2019, up to about 297 in 2021. So it's stayed roughly in that 250, 240 range. The bottom table is the transfers out of the district that are attending either neighboring districts or attending charter schools. You'll notice that number stays just above 100 over the last couple of years. The difference between the transfers in and the transfers out is a positive 113 students. Now, a majority of those transfers in are staff kids that work in the district and their kids are coming in with them into the district. That is something that we see virtually all school districts allow that to happen. The good news for me is you are transfer, you are you're a positive on your transfer in versus your transfer out. Out of the 80 school districts that we work in Texas, within Texas, the majority, the vast majority, the transfers out versus the transfers in are three to one negative. And so this does speak to that you are a destination district. Folks are moving here and they want their kids here because the transfer out numbers are relatively small. Now, I know it's it's all relative to to your specific district, but when I look at this, this is not problematic for me. Like I said, when I look at Keller ISD, Plano, Burleson, all those have twice the number, three times the number transferring out than transferring in. Now, I've done two sets of projections. One is based on about a 400 to 500 single-family absorption per year. So if we were to maintain 400 to 500 new single-family homes per year, you can see in five years, in the 2028, '29 school year, your enrollment would eclipse 4,000 students. And so I think this is a very reasonable number based on what we're seeing with the interest rates and what we're seeing with your absorptions right now, your construction right now. And so I would encourage you to kind of look at either the 4,000 or the 4,500 number. And I said this a couple of years ago, for you, it's not a matter of if these numbers are going to happen, it's just a matter of when. I did look at the projections that I did a couple of years ago, and I want to say you're about 60 kids under what we forecasted two years ago. So it's less than a 1% variance of what we thought. Again, I think the rising interest rates probably have influenced that, also the delay of getting some of these homes finished and enclosed. You will hit that number during your school year. So it's you're going to grow all year long as those homes get occupied. So planning for 4,500 students would be, I think, kind of a middle-of-the-road planning window because the reality is that may last you, you know, six to seven years of time, which is a pretty good horizon to plan for. If you get to the high number, which I forecast at 1,000 homes a year, then that number may, you may get to 4,500 in four years. And I'll show you those sets of numbers as well. Now, here's what this moderate forecast looks like at the campus level. You'll notice that Legacy Elementary would exceed capacity in three years in the '26, '27 school year. You'll notice that Godly Elementary would exceed capacity in 2029, and by 2030, all three elementaries would be exceeding capacity. Now, your Godly Middle School would exceed its capacity in 2026, '27 school year. The sixth grade campus would exceed that number in 2028. So in about three to five years, you're going to be running out of total middle school space. At the high school level, I have put the 1,200 capacity for your functional high school, and you would be right at that number in the '29, '30 school year. You could be at 1,219. So again, I would I would have you focus on 4,500 students and see, okay, what's it going to take to take care of 4,500 students? Because that is going to be in your either four-year or seven-to-eight-year horizon. If I'm going to say if we get lucky, it could last you seven to eight years. And if the interest rates drop, if the housing really gets to back to that 1,000 homes per year pace that we forecast, then it would only be four years before you hit that number. Now, here's what the higher forecast looks like. You'll notice that 4,500 number happens in the '27, '28 school year, four years from now. Here's what this number looks like at the campus level. You can see it basically moves everything up about two years. Legacy would be exceeding capacity in 2025, Godly in 2026, and then the all three would be exceeding in 2030. The middle school and the sixth grade campus would exceed in 2026, and your high school would exceed in 2028. I'll do key takeaways and go back and answer any questions. Godly ISD's enrollment grew by more than 650 students between 2017 and 2022. So very strong growth between that five-year period. We currently have over 780 lots available to build on with over 16,000 future lots in the planning stages. We have groundwork underway right now on 830 lots, which will be delivered within the next six to 12 months. Under the moderate growth scenario, the campuses could begin to experience crowding in the '26, '27 year. We do expect that the district is likely going to see nearly 4,000 students in '28, '29, and roughly 4,900 students by 2032, '33. Under the high-growth scenario, we could see 5,138 students in five years during the '28, '29 school year. Be happy to answer any questions. Yes, ma'am.
School, 1,200 functional capacity, is that without our added facilities?
I believe with the.
With it, okay. And that encompasses cafeteria and everything? Okay.
One thing about secondary high school, secondary capacities, there's a little bit of flex space with with high school capacity due to programming and scheduling. It's 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 a function of, it's more than just a function of the square footage. It's it can be scheduled and programmed differently to buy you a little bit of space. It's not going to buy you drastic numbers, but it could buy you 100 to 150 spaces. Now, elementary capacity does not have that ability. Elementary capacity is a pure section, numbers of grades per, number of sections per grade level. How many sections per grade level can that building handle? That is the capacity, and it's fixed. There's not much you can do, you can't do anything with the schedule. Now, you can do maybe something with adding sections through creative use, that it's very limited there.
So in your analysis upfront, you mentioned two roadway expansions, one on 377, one on 1187 east of 35. I have been understanding that 1187 is also planned for expansion from somewhere around the tollway all the way to 377. Did that not?
It didn't show up on our research. I'm not sure why we didn't catch that, but definitely anything that is helping with access and mobility is a positive, and it could excel, it can definitely be an accelerant to the growth because 45 minutes is about the range of a lot of commuters. So it's it's a 45-minute window, and that's why I mentioned in South Lake, it was one hour for me to get here. So, well, when you look at downtown Fort Worth, when you look at a lot of the employment centers, you're within that reach right now. But certainly, any improvements to the roadway, they cause some, they cause some short-term pain when they're in those expansions, but then long-term, it is a positive.
Thank you.
Craig, I can I can look and find that. When I flip through, I'd just assume that's what it was.
Yeah.
I think the timing was pretty close as far as starting around '28, 2028 or 2030, something like that. It's pretty close. I can find that out.
Okay.
I've got a question about 377. How do you see that impact in Godly versus Granberry?
Well.
To the schools?
You know, I think, you know, 377, it's anything that helps with the arteries, you know, out of Fort Worth and into Fort Worth are going to be a positive. Like I said, the Chisholm toll road was what I took to get down here from from that part of the area, and I was pleasantly surprised at how well it flowed. It flowed very well. And so I think, again, when we then think, okay, the accessibility is improving, so that's getting better, and the developers are going to be catching on to this, and so therefore, it's going to help with their rates of construction, their absorptions. So anything along those lines, that's a positive. I don't know if I'm specifically, you are closer than Granberry, so therefore, that's going to put you in a better spot. I will say, a lot of Granberry's growth is Crescent. That's where Granberry, because that Crescent area is technically in Granberry ISD. So the Granberry has two types of growth. It's lifestyle growth because of retirement in the lake, and so it's a second home for some, or, and so then they don't get the same yield of students per home because part of their housing mix is no kids because they're, it's a lifestyle choice. Now, the Crescent pocket up there, it's affordability, it's about affordability, so it is yielding students.
Dennis, I can tell you this, talking to some of our residents that live in Spring Ranch up north on 2331, they said when the new stoplight went in, it cut 15 minutes off their commute, just like that. So I would think it would improve the commute of our residents.
Another question for you, in your, what you're currently showing with the three elementaries, do I understand that the projections made here for each individual school is based on the current boundaries associated with each school?
It is.
Okay. I guess, again, thinking Plan B, Legacy Elementary, there could be some, if the boundaries were adjusted strategically, that it could help with some load management across the three elementaries.
Definitely, and I would encourage you to look at those futures. Those futures that don't have anybody here right now, that are going to maybe come online within the next year and could start producing, then you can mitigate some of the growth of those others so that you're not displacing families that are already here. So that's why I I prefer that as an attendant zone strategy because basically what you're doing is you're using a Band-Aid approach to solve a problem, which is is a good thing to do, but you don't want to rip the Band-Aid off that moves people that have already moved once. So looking at futures that that are going to come online fairly quickly, putting them in strategic spots does create some transportation issues, but you can study those and look to see how it'll play out. It'll create a map that looks a little funny, but then those get addressed when you open those next elementaries and you you redo your boundaries, and that's when you can then locate those more appropriately based on your future space that you build down the road.
I know the last demographic study was 2021, and this one in 2023, we've seen it, the growth slowed down a little bit. How often does the district do these demographic studies?
You know, I have clients that, we do updates on an annual basis, and some we do updates every quarter, and we have some of the, the outline areas where it's every two years or three years. So, I think it, it, you know, you're in that pace where it really should be looked at minimally annually, at a minimum annually. We've got like Aubrey, and I put you in kind of the Aubrey category, they've got a lot of growth going on in Aubrey. We do them in the fall and in the spring. We do a fall and spring update on their housing.
Thank you.
We do Forney every quarter. Now, Forney's doing 2,800 homes a year. So, you can just imagine what happens with the housing cycle there could swing that number, four or 500 homes, and it definitely changes their number on the projection side by several hundred students.
Dr. Dear, I know that the city did a demographic study fairly recently. Have we looked at any of that data and compared to this to see, do they correlate significant differences? What do we understand there?
We haven't really looked, compared them yet, because we just, just received this, but we're definitely going to take a look at those.
Yes, thank you.
Always a pleasure to be here. If you think of questions, don't hesitate to send them to Superintendent Dear. We'd, we'd happy to respond at any time. Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we've got Dr. Cottle. With the ESL update. Is Ms. Lee helping you, or is it just you doing it?
She's here to answer questions if we need it, but I'm just going to go ahead and do the report. So, we are required to annually bring you an update on our emergent bilingual. Oh, I do. Thank you. All right. Am I going the wrong way? Nope. Okay, our emergent bilingual program. And so, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about where we currently stand, some changes in the programming, and just give you a little bit of information. So, two things that have changed in the, this school year, as of August 9th, the reclassification criteria. Previously, for a student to be considered no longer an emergent bilingual student, they had to be rated as advanced high in all four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. That was very difficult for students that are not native English speakers. This year, they've changed that, so now they need a composite score of advanced high. So, I believe that's going to help a lot of our students that they're, they're doing great, they're making advances, that they just couldn't necessarily reach advanced high in every area. So, as long as they have that in the composite, that will get them out of the ESL program and then just regular programming now. So, we're looking forward to seeing that growth for those students. Also, the home language survey had a few changes. Previously, it just asked what language was spoken at home. A lot of parents, some speak Spanish, some speak English, they had a little bit of trouble. Now, now it asks specifically what language is mostly spoken at home and what language does the child speak mostly. So, that helps us a lot, because a lot of times, even if the student, the home speaks Spanish, the child may not. And so, we do, we are looking at a little bit of change there, so that's going to help us. And they also had one other change about if the child had previously lived in a home or in a circumstance where there was another language spoken. So, it just gives us a little bit more information than just English or Spanish or whatever we used to get. So, that's, that's good information for us now. And also, of course, you can see our emergent bilingual offers are rise, they have been growing every year. As our population grows and changes, we're going to continue to see more students coming in that don't speak English, but that doesn't necessarily mean they speak Spanish either. We are seeing students come in with a variety of other home languages. So, that brings us a variety of other, you know, needs that we're trying to meet kids where they are and provide them with support in whatever their home language is, whether it's Spanish or French or whatever it is. So, on that front, we are, we do offer ESL program here in our district. Our, our goal is for all of our elementary teachers ESL certified. Most of them are. We have all of our teachers bilingual, ESL certified, but we do have a program in place so that in those circumstances where they're not, we have a teacher there to support them. Currently, the state requires if you have more than 20 students that would qualify for bilingual in any grade level, that you would offer bilingual program. We do have that in more, in several grade levels. We have more than 20 students that would qualify, but we are not able to find teachers that are bilingual certified. There's a shortage across the entire state. Even big districts that are in the middle of urban areas are very struggling to find bilingual teachers. So, we have filed for an exemption this year, just as we have in the past few years. So, we provide services as best we can. We provide English as a second language, which provides them language support, but we do not have the personnel in place or even the ability to find teachers that are bilingual certified right now to offer a bilingual program. Now, ideally, we will in the next couple of years. As part of our Teach Worthy and Grow Your Own program, we're really working to have students that are in high school right now, continue to work, take Spanish III, Spanish IV, come into our Teach Worthy program, work as paraprofessionals in the district for a few years, get their college degree. We'll help them get their teaching certification, and then put them in as a, as a pre-K bilingual teacher, and then we'll just build that program up from pre-K and then kinder first grade. I would say it's probably going to be five years before we have a well-established bilingual program, but we are working on it. So, I, I know, just want you to know, it's on the horizon, it's something we're looking at. I've worked, I've built bilingual programs in many districts. I know what it takes, but you just can't force it. If you can't find the right teachers, it's, it's just not going to be successful. So, we're working on it, but, so we do have an exemption in place to help cover that bilingual program. And also, the, the, the couple of areas where we don't have an ESL certified teacher, we have someone who is serving those children in a bilingual, in an ESL pull-out program. So, we do have the programming in place. Just kind of to let you know what we do have, sorry, let me, my glasses don't see that far. Okay, and so, our program models that we do have in place, as I said, our goal is to have all of our elementary teachers certified under the ESL certification. That's just, that makes sure that every student has a teacher in their classroom that has ESL strategies, they know how to help those students. We have guided instruction in place, we're following the standards and also the ALPS, which are those English Language Proficiency Standards. Really, ESL is just really good instruction. It's just making sure kids have multiple opportunities to see and hear and learn using all the, the strategies that we have. Also, making sure that we're promoting parent involvement. We offer a couple of parent trainings throughout the year for students whose families are, have a second language at home. And then, we had our summer school program, and we've had summer school for ESL students the last several years. We've had really great attendance in that area, so I'll come back to that in just a minute. Did want to show you where we do have our ESL teachers, on the campuses, at the elementary schools, 24, 25, 26. I think we have one teacher at RB Godly that is an elementary classroom, she's a math teacher, but she's not ESL certified, but the language arts teacher is on the other side. We have a couple of teachers that are not ESL certified, but they don't have students in their class that need ESL services. So, we'll just continue to work with those teachers till they do have their certification, so we're not putting children in a classroom with a teacher that's not, not ESL certified. And then, at our middle school and high school, we have about 15 teachers each there, and that's our language arts teachers for the most part. We make sure that they, those ESL, or the English Language Arts teachers have their certification. All right. Staff training, we did a great training this year. The very beginning of the school year in August, we had a half-day training with the service center on a content-based language instruction, and I think every teacher I talked to just raved about how great the trainer was, the strategies. He made it very engaging and, and real, and they, they learned a lot of things from that program. So, we made sure every single teacher in the district was able to go through that, and so that brought a lot of information and strategies to our teachers, which is something that they really enjoy. The Title III Symposium, that's a bilingual ESL conference. We send pre-K teachers, second-grade teachers, we had several elementary teachers that went to that over the summer. They always learn a lot there, they bring back, and then they share with their teams, and they share that information. And then, also, the, yeah, the Language Proficiency Assessment Committee, that's a group of people that look at what the changes are coming to the assessment, TELPOS and STAR, what's going to be allowed for students that have linguistic accommodations, things like that. And so, these are just all the trainings that we've done this year. And then, our parent outreach, again, Title III, we provide trainings through the Texas Education Agency, and we bring those trainings here through a podcast or a webinar, and the parents can come and participate. We had pretty good turnout this year. On our TELPOS, our goal, annually, or this year, our goal is for every one of our students to show growth, and that's always our goal. We want the students to just get better. They don't have to get all the way to the very top level, but if everybody grows every year, then we're doing everything we can to, to get them to where they need to be by the end of the, end of the line there. So, if they can demonstrate growth every, all four, in all four domains, then we're going to get them up to that advanced high composite score and get them out of the bilingual, or ESL program, sorry. I worked in bilingual districts for so long, it always just runs together. So, we're going to work, our Summit K-12, that's a program that we brought in last year and had great success with, and we're definitely seeing kids engaging in that, the information that they're learning through that platform, helping them learn language skills, and, and so we're going to continue to do that this year, embed language proficiency standards through everyday teaching. We're not doing it separately, it's just part of what we do every day, and then move kids through to reclassification as quickly as we can, once they've reached that advanced high composite. This is our growth, and if you look real closely, those lines are kind of small, but if you look at the, the dark purple as compared to the kind of orangey color, you can see the, the growth that we've seen. So, that, that very bottom line is our emergent bilingual students this past year in 2022, and the growth that they had. And so, we're seeing that growth happen, we're seeing those kids continue to improve, and, and that's what we're wanting. We just want to make sure they're, they're gaining every single year, their reading gets better, their writing gets better, and of course, their speaking, understanding of the language improves every year. So, we're proud of those results, and we know that we're going to continue to see that kind of growth with, with what we have in place right now. And again, this is us compared with the state on TELPOS this past year, and you can see there are some places where well above the state, there are some places where a little bit below the state, but overall, we're staying pretty much on, on, on par. You'll get those groups where you have a large population of ESL students, and then other years, you only have a handful, and so, we're just tracking students year after year, making sure that they're growing. We're more important with the students' growth than where a group of students is in line with the state, but we do want to keep an eye on that and make sure we're, we're close to where the state is. Oh, and this is the most important part, what the kids are doing. So, this is our summer school program. We had 20 students that came, is that right? 22 students that came for summer school this year. We held it over at the sixth grade campus, we had programs come in, they learned about animals, and they had plants. We actually grew plants that our horticulture students from here at the high school had provided for them, and they do a lot of amazing hands-on things. We have amazing teachers that come during the summer and work with them. So, that's some of the best growth that these kids have, because it's small, it's hands-on, it's fun. They go all day long for a week, or all, every day for a month. They come all day, and we provide them breakfast and lunch and transportation, and it's, it's great. This is a great program, and Ms. Lee has done fantastic work, making sure our, our programs have just flourished the last few years that she's been in her position. So, what are we going to do this year? Continue to work towards those STAR and TELPOS results improving, not that that's the thing that we live and die by, but that's what the state's looking at. Keep Summit K-12 in hand. We're going to continue to work on our parent involvement. That's something we're working on across the board. We want to make sure that we're engaging with parents in the community in every way possible. We had our family and community engagement meeting tonight, and that's our big push for this year. We want to increase, increase that summer school enrollment next summer. 22 kids is great, but if we can have more come, that's even better. And then, looking for that bilingual staff, we really want to try and make sure we can find some quality teachers that are ready with the language skills in English and in Spanish to be able to teach students bilingual from the very beginning in pre-K, and then we'll continue to build our program from there. So, any questions, if you have them, I will try to answer, and if not, I will grab her and make her come up here to the microphone and, and answer them. So, yes.
Um, what, what specifically are we doing to attract the bilingual staff there? I mean, like, I would think that we would start identifying where we need them the most in the next year-
Yes.
And start, are we recruiting? Are we marketing that we are looking, I mean, how, what are we doing?
Well, really, our goal is to grow them from within. We have looked, we've talked to other districts that have gone out of the country and have brought people back from other countries. They've, that requires visas and things like that. Most of the districts we've talked to have shied away from that in the past few years. We go to job fairs, we always ask, you know, hey, are you interested in, in, you know, bilingual? We're starting a program. I will say, that's probably one thing most teachers don't want to do, is start a program. They want to come in where it's already set up and it's ready to roll. We've only in the last year or two really started thinking about, okay, what's our long-range plan? When, when can we get this started? When are we going to need this? Because it's only really been in the last couple of years that we consistently had students in every grade level. We might have one or two in one grade level and one or two in the next, but we're getting to that point now where we're going to have kids in pre-K, K1 consistently every year. But when we're at a point where we know, okay, this is it, we, we need to start in the next couple of years, we will start doing a little bit more of that recruiting and putting it out there. I'm going to tell you, it's going to take money. I mean, it's going to take money to get teachers here. A lot of districts offer five, $10,000 bonuses just for hiring bilingual teachers, and when you're fighting against Dallas ISD and Fort Worth ISD, and they pay high salaries plus substantial bonuses for bilingual teachers, it's not going to be easy. Truly, it's not. Even Cleburne, I mean, they, they have a pretty substantial bilingual program right there in Cleburne, but they've had to raise their bilingual stipend multiple times over the last few years to keep the teachers there. Joshua has a bilingual program. I mean, it's, there's districts right, very close by us that can pay quite a bit more and offer fairly large stipends for bilingual that we're going to have to compete with. So, but we will, we have a, we have some plans, we have some ideas on how we can do it from within and, and try and build it up from here, and offer them something that a lot of other people can't, and that's a college degree and a teaching certificate while they work here at home. So.
Yes.
I had a quick question on, on the average where Godly was under the state average, there are some specific grades. I was wondering if there's any kind of explanation as to why, you know, second, third grade, and then you jump over there to, I guess it's ninth-
That ninth grade, yes.
-eleventh grade or under.
Come up here. You got to talk on the mic.
When students are in kindergarten and first grade, their teachers are holistically rating them, so they're not formally sitting down and taking a test. The teachers are looking at the student as a whole, and they're making that decision based on their, their performance in the classroom. Once they hit second grade, they are taking an online assessment, so oftentimes, we see those scores drop because second graders aren't used to typing on a computer, they're not used to putting on headphones and recording their answers. So, that's a big, you know, statewide, normally, that kind of drops, because that's just a big difference for them. As far as, once they get into that ninth grade, oftentimes, students in high school just might not have as much gumption to do their best on these assessments, so that would be my justification as to why I see those drops. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, I want to follow up on a question that Ms. Heiner asked regarding our strategy for growing. So, I know we have a number of seniors here, even in the room with us tonight, but you mentioned the Teach Worthy. I would think there would be some way that we could incentivize them now, as they're getting ready to leave, to go to college, to get that degree and go, you know what, I'm a wildcat, I'm going to come back and be a wildcat and teach other wildcats.
Absolutely.
So, I guess that's, what incentives are we looking at to try to entice those students to follow that path?
So, are you asking me about the ones that leave to go to college and then are coming back to teach here, or the ones that are staying here and going through the Teach Worthy program?
Either or.
Okay. I will say-
I'm really looking at, it, it's more about enticing those students-
To come back.
-to want to-
Yes.
-come back versus, well, we just lucked into two coming back.
Right, 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 right. We have, I want to say, I think, two seniors that were students last year. One was actually going to go to college and then decided to stay home and came back and is actually working for us now. But two that were seniors last year that came back, they're working in the, as paraprofessionals now, and we're starting them in college, and then one from the previous year. So, we have three students right now that graduated from here, and they're staying here, and they're starting their college degree, and we're on our way. I feel like that's just going to continue to grow. We've talked to Ms. Burke, and we go talk to her class, and she- We've talked to Ms. Burke, and we go talk to her class, and she's like, they're starting to see like, oh, this is pretty cool, like, we can stay here, we can work, we can go to college. That's a big incentive for them. They have a good job, they're getting their college, and they're staying right here at home, and they're not having to kind of go through that. As far as those that are maybe going off to Alabama, or wherever they're going to college, and trying to get them to come back to teach here, that's a great question. I think that's something that we need to talk about and see what key we can do. There are quite a few, if you look at our teachers that grew up here, that graduated from here, they went off, they got their degree, and then they came home and teach here. We have quite a few people that work in our district that this is home, and they came back because this is where they've lived their whole lives. But as far as putting something in place to draw them back, it's a great question.
Are any of the three bilingual that we currently have in the TeachWorthy program?
One of them, I believe, is bilingual, but she did not take Spanish III and IV, I think. I'm not 100% sure, but that's my goal, is to get them to stay in Spanish. I will tell you, the hardest part about the bilingual test right now is you have almost perfect, and I don't mean good, almost perfect written, like, you have to be able to read and write in Spanish grammatically perfect. I could have taken the bilingual test when I graduated from college, passed it no problem. I've had friends in the last few years who are, like, grew up native language speakers, and they have not been able to pass the test because it is so challenging to get through that bilingual test right now. And, I mean, we've talked to the state, we're like, you're killing us, you know? We can't get people to pass the test to become bilingual teachers. But if they will stay in and take Spanish III and IV and stand through college and just continue to get that education in the Spanish language, we'll be able to get them through it. You can't go thinking, I speak Spanish and I'll be able to pass the test. It's a whole different world now.
So in our Spanish classes in the high school, are our teachers being encouraged to mention things like that to their students, so that they know?
We had talked last year, of course, Ms. Brady left, and so we have a new teacher. But yeah, I think that's definitely a conversation we want to continue to have with them. Most kids, they get their Spanish, they get their two years and they're done, and they want to go in and do other things. But I think the more conversations we can have with them, as they're coming through their guidance and they're learning about the pathways, and just, I mean, honestly, having Spanish is going to help you no matter what career path you take these days. And so the more kids we can get to stay in and just get that under their belt, the better off. But it's definitely an area we need to continue to bolster.
I have a quick question. What does our ESL, what is the certification for the teachers? What does that consist of?
So it's a separate test they take. There's a class, there's a course you can take, or there's materials that you can study, but it's either a separate test if you're already certified, or you can take it as part of your elementary certification. So you just choose that test, and it has an additional series of questions about how to best serve students that are from a second language home, or that either have a second language and they're learning English. It just works on, do you know the strategies on how to best serve these students? And we do help teachers, like, when they get hired, we help them go through the study material, we pay for them to go to the service center and take courses there. We do everything we can to help them if they need it or want it. Some of them can go take the test and they're just fine, they know what to do, but we offer all kinds of supports to help them get certified.
Dr. Cottrell, I know at one time we talked about, any student that came back and applied for us, we'd guarantee them an interview. Are we still doing that?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
We do, and I think we hired everyone that, every one of them that's come back. I mean, we always love to, we've got, we have students that graduated, working all kinds of jobs all over the district right now. We've hired, I think, four or five in different areas in the last few months. So yeah, come work at Godly, we need you. So, all right, anything else?
Dr. Dear, can we take the action to look at what incentives can be offered? Again, I'm thinking, again, for students that are seniors now, looking to graduate, again, we've got to aggressively work it, or otherwise, we'll be sitting back and admiring this problem for the next five years.
I definitely have to say that what we're doing in our teacher ed program right now is light years ahead of what we were doing a couple of years ago. Ms. Burke has just taken that program, and it's amazing. So I think we are on the precipice of seeing some great things come out of that program, and they'll be coming back. It won't take long.
The TeachWorthy program is one of the biggest things we're doing, because I know the class we spoke to, I know Ms. Burke told her that, told the kids all about the program and what it did, but they still didn't get that we were going to pay for their college. And we started talking about, yeah, you're not going to have any college debt, I mean, we're going to pay for everything, and there were still kids going, wait, wait, hold on, wait, you're going to pay for everything? And they're just asking, and so they still don't get it. So we've just got to keep having that conversation, but the TeachWorthy is one of the biggest ones. Okay, now Nikki Nixon's going to talk about something she's not very excited about.
I'm really not, but I'm going to be passionate about it, so that'll make up for it. Good evening, Dr. Dear, Board President, Board members. I am going to bring you an update on CCMR, College Career Military Readiness Accountability Measures that the state has pushed out to us. You might remember back in the spring, I visited with you a couple of times about CTE and CCMR changes that TEA had pushed out. One of them was an audit that we received because of our abnormally high CCMR rates. I'm happy to say that that audit cleared, and there were no findings in that, so we had done everything correctly according to TEA for that. The second piece was TEA removed several certifications from the IBC list, the Industry-Based Certification List. So things like Microsoft Word, OSHA, where we had students earning large numbers of those, over 170 certifications were earned on those two things alone. Now, no longer count unless students take the expert level of Microsoft and they complete three or more courses for four or more credits inside of that aligned program of study. So the result of that is that TA has made it really difficult for students to earn a CCMR point through CTE and certifications. The newest change that they've pushed out comes as a part of their performance reporting, and you may have seen this on the news, there are some school districts across the state, more than 60 of them have filed a lawsuit against TEA in regards to this CCMR change, but it's going to impact us as well. So I wanted you to hear the information and see how it's going to impact us directly here in Godly. The Accountability Manual has not yet been released, that's the 2023 Accountability Manual. That's not the Accountability Manual for this year, this is actually last year's accountability. So the whole year has been completed, we're six months past that, and we still don't know how they're going to measure success for us as a school district. Add on top of that, the CCMR indicators in the 2023 Accountability Manual are actually based on 2022 graduates. So students that graduated in 2021, we passed through all of 2022, 23, and now we're in September of 2023, and still don't know how those students are going to be graded or what kind of scores we'll get from the state. They're working on the manual, and they promise us that it will be released sometimes in October of this year, but they did release some proposed cut score changes for CCMR, and that's what is really going to impact us in a big way. So if you look at this slide, it's kind of small, but you can see that in 2017, the state first set CCMR cut scores, and for schools to receive an A, they had to have a 60% students' CCMR ready. That means 60% of the seniors in the previous year had to either earn that indicator through ACT, SAT, TSI, dual credit, CTE certifications in some way. The new cut scores that are projected are there on the right. So for an A, schools now had to have 88%. So we moved from 60 to 88, which was an increase of 28 percentage points. And for a B, it moved from a 48 to a 78, which is 30 percentage points. So they've made it harder for students to earn CCMR points through CTE certifications and core sequencing, and now they're increasing cut scores for schools between 25 and 30 points all in one year. Those changes to certifications were actually phased in, and there's a three-to-five-year phase-in plan for those, which is one good thing that came out of that. But there is no language that speaks to that in the CCMR cut score changes. If there is not additional changes put into the Accountability Manual, these scores will go into effect for last year's scores, and we have no way of adjusting or monitoring to meet those requirements that TEA has set out for us. So if you look, our 22 accountability, which was actually 21 seniors, and we had 71.6% of those students earn a CCMR point, at least one CCMR point in some way, ACT, SAT, TSI, CTE, dual credit. That scaled on the old accountability system to a 93, which is an A. This past year, we don't have the actual numbers yet, but what we're projecting using TEA's conversion tool, is that 77.8% of the 22 seniors, which will count on last year's accountability, earned a CCMR point. Oh, awesome, we increased 6.2% in CCMR readiness, right? Yeah, until you look at the new cut scores that TEA has released. So if you take last year's accountability and you look at last year's scores, we should scale to a 94, which is another A in CCMR readiness, but that's not what TEA has done. We'll actually move from an A to a C if these numbers are accurate and TEA sticks with their change to cut scores for CCMR readiness. Using their tool, their conversion tool, we will score a 79 for CCMR, even though we've had a 6.2% increase in the number of students that are CCMR ready from one year to the next. Now, TA might surprise me, they might come knock on doors, go door-to-door and say, hey, this is how we changed CCMR cut scores, this is what this means. I don't think that's going to happen. I think they're going to release scores, and the general public are going to look at that and say, Godly ISD, you went from an A to a C, man, y'all have dropped the ball on CCMR. And I'm not going to stand for that, at least without trying to educate you guys as our board and as our public and our parents and our community. I have a lot of additional commentary that I would be happy to have with you guys on this side, but I want to honor your time, so I'll end with this. This is a perfect example of why CBAS is so valuable to us as a school district. We're not using arbitrary cut scores for whatever TEA is using to come up with these conversion tools. We're using real numbers, and if we're going to really talk about the growth of our students, moving from 71.6% to 77.8% is a huge growth. And I'm so incredibly proud of our teachers, our counselors, our administrators, our front office staff, and more importantly, our students who are putting in the hard work to get whatever CCMR indicator is relevant to them, to prepare them for their next step in life. None of that is reflected in this letter grade. We are so much more than that one letter grade that TA is about to assign to us, and that's why CBAS is so important in telling our story, getting a whole picture, not a partial picture, not a picture that's skewed by cut scores. It is a more holistic view of what we do for students and how we serve the students of our community. So with that, this is just an informational item, again, hopefully to help educate you as board members, educate our parents and community that are watching, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this point.
Do you have a goal for our raw CCMR score for this next year?
I do, but I'm not confident in it yet because of the changes that have happened to CTE certifications. You know, we had a large percentage of students earn business certifications through BIM, the Microsoft Word and PowerPoint, it was 150 of them earned last year. So we are still offering that certification, because I believe that's what's best for kids, is to still give them that, because there is a job readiness and a real-world application there. But if they're not in a program of study of entrepreneurship, then that doesn't mean anything to us as a school for accountability purposes. We are adding certifications, we added floral design last year, we added an IT certification, we added the drone certification. We are working really hard to add those certifications that are aligned to the programs of study. So quite honestly, I feel like we will probably drop in CCMR readiness, not this year, but the next year, because that's when this cycle comes through with concentrator and completer status for students. My goal right now is to maintain, but I don't know that that will happen due to the changes in the way that the state is holding us accountable and requiring students to complete courses.
I've noticed over the last few years that we've really been pushing every student to take the SAT here, that we're offering it at the high school now during the day. Will that help us? And do you foresee us possibly taking that one step further and helping each one of our seniors put in one college application somewhere, you know, Hill, wherever they want, so that every single one of our students has at least applied to college? Will that help us as well?
The college applications won't help us on this, but it will help students take that next step into college. Our counselors are doing an apply-for-pie drive right now, so if students submit an application to any college, then they're going to be eligible to get a piece of pie on a day in November, which is really cool. There's kids turning in applications all the time right now because they want pie. So yes, it won't help us on accountability, but it will help us with students just being curious and taking that next step. Repeat the first, SAT, yes, we are offering SAT School Day. We're exploring strengthening our advanced academics testing cycle, talking about PSAT, talking about PSAT 8, 9, and how we can target those students even in middle school to build a 6 through 12 testing platform. But we do have ACT School Day on the calendar. Ms. Copeland just got certified as a TSI administrator, so we're adding that to the course. Mr. Myers just sent the agreement for a program called Texas College Bridge, which will count for CCMR, so students who aren't able to meet the standards for TSI, ACT, SAT, they can take a College Bridge course that will then exempt them from TSI scores at the college level in math and English, and that will count. And we just got an email from Tarleton State this week that says, they're adding English as one of their course offerings, so we will be able to explore that more with our in-house English teachers to offer that dual enrollment, which then also counts for CCMR points. So there's a lot of things in the fire, trying to make them happen, but it's really about meeting kids where they are and providing the exact opportunity for that student to earn a point that meets their needs.
Can we, who can we contact at TEA?
Everybody, all of TEA. They're not taking comments right now, so.
Will you let us know when that opens for public comment and make sure we all get the information?
Absolutely. I'll send you some bullet points when the opportunity arises.
They're taking a breath, because I read that they just estimated that 44% of ISDs are going to drop to a D or an F, and a lot of ISDs are going to be like us, they could drop from an A to a C, C or a D. So, but that's what, if you're a governor who really wants vouchers, you want to create a panic that public schools are failing, and he's about to call another special session for vouchers, so it's, I don't know.
It's just unfortunate that the cost and all of that is our students in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you for your passion.
All right, the time is 7:28 PM. We've reached the business portion of our meeting, and before we do so, the board will move into a recess for 10 minutes. We'll reconvene at 7:39 PM. We will remain in open session. All right, the time is seven thirty-nine PM, and the board will reconvene out of recess. We'll move into business items at this time. And first, we'll consider, consider the consent agenda items, which is the minutes of regular meeting, August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, district financial report, district tax report, district monthly investment and cash report, and budget amendments. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. I have a question regarding the budget amendment.
Yes, sir.
I do realize that you balance things out at the end of the year, but what was that specific amendment for?
The one that's on the.
Yeah, the sixty-five K-ish.
Necessary to re-code that bill for, that got budgeted correctly from one, one function to another.
I have a question on the same amendment. I noticed that sixty-five thousand was coming out of instruction and going to data processing. Just was curious what that was for.
It's our, it's our information system, the Skyward that we use, that got put into function eleven, it needs to come out of function fifty-three instead. It's just, again, it's just a reclassification for correction on the budget.
But it's not taking away from instruction?
No, 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 no.
Any other questions? All right, I'll now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
That motion by Terry is seconded by Dennis. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Eight B will consider adoption of the Hill College tax rate.
Yes, so the Hill College Godly ISD tax rate for two thousand twenty-three. We presented this to y'all earlier, past two months. So just wanted to recap. So two thousand twenty-two's tax rate was point oh-two-four-two-one-oh, so, you know, just a little over two cents per a hundred dollars valuation. This year's no new revenue, no new, no new revenue rate is point oh-two-one-four-two-three, so a decrease of about three cents. And the Hill College proposed adopting the voter approval tax rate of two point three-six-oh-five, which still would have been about a half a cent decrease. We've discussed in the meeting last month, we've discussed in the cabinet, and at this time, we'd like to propose a no new revenue rate, point oh-two-one-four-two-three.
I'll make a motion. Does that require a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the no new tax, no new revenue for the adoption of the Hill County tax rate of point oh-two-one-four-two-three.
That motion by Terry is seconded by Marissa. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brian. Eight C will have the second review of Godly ISD District Improvement Plan.
Okay. Hello again. So sorry I wasn't here last month. It was a crazy day. So I do wanna talk to you, first I wanna talk about our district improvement plan. So last month, we brought to you our needs assessment. And we had started our needs assessment looking at our STAR data, our surveys, just kinda where we were, and started trying to tease out what we were starting to see as some of the major obstacles that we had, were facing this year. After the board meeting, we went back again and we talked about the verbiage and the way the statements were written and the principles. We talked and we're like, you know what, this doesn't really say what we wanted to say. So we went through and we, the heart of the matter was there, but we kinda reworded it to get back down to, what are we trying to tell you guys? What are we trying to get through to? And then we've gone through even a little bit of more, took it to the District Improvement Committee, talked to them about the concerns that we're facing. And so just wanna remind you, the district improvement plan is a living document. That's my favorite word because it continues to change and morph and grow as we go through the year, as we look at, okay, this is what I said, but this is what I meant. How could I say it differently? So I wanna revisit first the problem statements that Mr. Karns brought to you guys last month. The problem hasn't changed, but the verbiage has changed a little bit. So I just wanna read to you the problem statements and let you ask me some questions about what are we getting to the heart of? I love that we do this three times because it gives us a chance to really think about it and feel like, do we agree? Or is this where we are? Are these the problems we're seeing? Are these the solutions we have in place before we approve it and we say, yes, that's where we're going? So I love the process that we have now that gives us time to think it through. So, so looking at our problem statements, so the first one we wanted to look at was that students are not consistently demonstrating higher level thinking, speaking, and writing skills, so teachers do not feel that they can push them to perform at higher levels of rigor. And some of the root causes we looked at were that, that the lesson objectives, the questioning, the experiences, that they're not providing students that opportunity to feel productive struggle. And productive struggle is a hard thing because teachers by nature wanna help. So when they give a child a problem that's really difficult and the child starts to struggle, it's painful for a teacher to watch a child struggle sometimes. So we tend to swoop in and help and maybe give them a little bit more support than they need. So when we see children struggling at basic things, we hesitate to push them to do harder things. We wanna get past that. We wanna get past that point of saying, well, they can't really do this, so we're not gonna ask them to do anything more. We really believe if we can engage them in learning things that they're passionate about and they're interested in, that they're gonna show us that they can do hard things. Sometimes they won't do hard things because hard things are hard and they don't want to. I mean, you all have children, you all know. And so sometimes if we can get past that and show them, oh, there's a reason for this, this has a point, like if you can take this and go somewhere, they will, and they'll surpass what we even think they can do, and they'll do amazing, great things. If you've seen some of the things going on in our CTE classrooms, they're doing very hard things, they just don't know it because they're having a good time doing them. So at the heart of that one, it's not that our teachers aren't pushing our kids, it's not that our kids aren't learning, it's just trying to get past that point of rescuing them when they struggle. We wanna let the teachers, give them hard things and let them struggle with it and get to that point where they'll do more than they think they can. So that's the first one. The second problem statement that we talked about was that students are not consistently, nope, that's not it, I'm lying, that, that we're not consistently seeing students engaged in quality learning experiences, and that may not be the exact verbiage, but again, if kids aren't engaging in the lessons, it's not because our teachers aren't doing a great job, it's not because our students aren't working hard, but if we aren't meeting that level of student interest and student engagement and getting them to work at quality learning activities, why? Why are we not seeing that happen? And what can we do to support our teachers? We had a meeting with our teachers at the District Improvement Committee, and we spread out all around the room and asked them three questions about students working at higher levels, students engaging in the learning, and students having ownership. And all three groups came back with one answer. We don't have the time, the strategies, and the resources to meet every single kid where they are. And we said, okay, let's fix that because we do have the time and we do have the strategies and we do have the resources. We just haven't brought them together and given our teachers exactly what they need yet. But we're going to do that, and that's a big part of what we're gonna do this year. So teachers, they face so much right now. I mean, kids are just at every end of the spectrum. But as a district, time is something we have been dedicated to. We give our teachers one day a month, every month, to plan, to design, to do whatever they need to do. But this year, we're taking that time and we're being even more intentional than we've ever been. We're, we're having our coaches pull the coaches in and work with them, the football coaches, not the instructional coaches, but the football coaches, pulling in the PE teachers and talking to them about how they can support instruction in the PE classroom. We're having our fine arts teachers pull together at the elementary level and talk about how they can support instruction. We're, we're pulling our bus drivers in and doing safety training, like we're really being intentional that people that don't typically look at those days as important, these days are important for everyone. This is all we have. These days, this time is all we have. So we're gonna be very intentional and fill those days with good instructional strategies. We spent two hours on September first, working with our teachers on vertical planning, and the principals met with the teachers, and it was amazing, it was a powerful two hours, and those teachers came out and said, yes, this is what we need. So every month, we're gonna schedule these days and build in exactly what the teachers need and provide that for them. So that's one of our strategies. One of the other pieces that I wanted to let you know about is the fact that right now, every single textbook in our school district, in every school district across the state of Texas, except for high school language arts, is out of adoption. Every one of them. The state stopped the adoption process about three or four years ago when we were supposed to be looking at science adoptions. They stopped. They were gonna try something different. We hit COVID. All of these things happened, so we are just this year looking at adopting new science textbooks for next year. Our math textbooks have been out of adoption for two years. Our history books are out of adoption. Our language arts, every single thing is out of adoption. So what does that mean? Resources that we haven't been paying for for the last five, six, seven years, we had to pay for this year, all at once. Thankfully, we got ahead of the curve with reading and language arts, and we had already invested in a reading curriculum that put us in a better place. But teachers are right, they don't have, there's not, like you guys, when we all went to school, there was a textbook, and there was a teacher's edition, and there was a curriculum that they came out and they handed it to you and said, here you go, if you start in chapter one and end in chapter thirty-five, you got it. That doesn't exist anymore. It's not out there. So we are having to go find resources and buy and make and. So we are having to go find resources and buy and, and make and create and train and train and train our teachers because there are not resources out there designed to just follow the teaks and teach the way we all used to learn. You know, it just doesn't happen that way. Our CTE curriculums, they just don't make a curriculum on how to be a nurse when you're in high school, things like that. So when we say we don't have the resources, it's not because we don't have things, but we don't have a just perfectly built curriculum that you can just pick up and teach any kid. We're having to go and find the right pieces to fit all the different various learners that we have in our schools. So I know that question came up about why we don't have the things and I wanted you to hear that from me is that the state has put us in a place where, I mean, I feel just as passionately as Ms. Nix does about this, that they've put us in this place where they change the rules, they take away the tools. They, they tell us, okay, go make it happen with nothing. You have no money, no resources, and we're going to change the test and the rules and good luck. So we're doing amazing things here with kids. I'm going to show you a few little things, I'm not going to show you, but I'm going to tell you some things that we've already done this year that have been successful and the things that we're going to continue to do and what our goals are for this year going forward. But our problems are deep problems and they're not godly problems. They're, they're education problems that we're facing. So, and the other thing I want to talk to you about is our last one, and that's communication. We've been talking about this a lot in our district, but seven out of 10 people in Godly are not connected to this school district in any way. They don't have a child in our school. They don't have a grandchild. They don't have any reason to connect with us. They don't know who we are, what we're doing. But it's our job to get them and bring them in and connect with us for whatever reason, whether it's volunteering, whether it's to support us in the taxes season, whatever it is, we need to connect with the other seven people in our, in our school district that aren't connected to us. And that takes a lot of time and energy and money and resources, but we're going to do it because it's important to us because the entire city of Godly and all our surrounding areas have to support the school district for us to be successful. So we're going to find a way, but that's a big number for us. We didn't realize how many people in this community weren't connected. We felt like everybody's a wildcat. So anyway, so just to put a few things out there for you with our problem statements. So the goals that we're looking at this year, our first goal is, so by, by law, by state law, we have to have one goal that addresses STAR. And so our goal is that we will increase 10% on students demonstrating mastery of the content and higher level thinking, speaking, and writing by responding to questions, completing activities at high levels, by increasing that rigor. And we're going to see that on all the tests, MAP, STAR, SAT, ACT. More importantly, when we walk into the classrooms and see what's happening in the classroom. That's where we really want to see that growth. And one thing, we set a goal a few years ago to be at 60% of our students at the MEETS level. That's that middle level. Last year, we had 43% of our students at MEETS in the reading test and our goal was to get to 49%. We got to 53%. So we surpassed our goal in reading. We made, we improved by 10 percentage points. So we're going to continue to improve there up to 58% and then by the next year gets to 60. We'll probably surpass it because we're that, we're good. In math, we were at 35% last year. Our goal was to improve by 5%. We didn't quite make it. We got up to 38%. So we did show growth. We didn't make our goal, but our focus this year is on math. We are really, we've put a lot of energy into reading the last few years because if you can't read, you can't do anything else. But this year, we're really putting a lot into math. So we're going to continue to see that math growth happen. But our goal for this year is that we're going to see, hold on. I think our goal for this, we were at 38%, so our goal for this year is 44%. So we anticipate seeing that 5% growth in math at the MEETS level. Now remember, that's not just passing. Passing, we did great. Meets is a little bit higher level and we're going to get there. So that is our first goal. It's all about academics. It's all about what we're going to do to see growth in our students. Some things that we're doing as a team, as a district, we, we are putting a heavy focus on being in the classrooms. All of our campus administrators, all of our district administrators, we are walking the buildings. We're in classrooms every day. I've been on every campus in every classroom, Legacy. I finally got there. My office is literally three steps outside the door at Legacy. Can't get in a classroom over there, but I made it today. But for us to be in the classrooms, because we can't do anything if we don't know what's happening in the classrooms. So we are out and about. We've asked our teachers to hang their lesson plans outside the classroom door this year because that way we can just pick them up and read and see what's going on in here. Awesome. I can walk in and I can engage with kids that quickly. I don't have to go look them up in a platform, things like that. Love it, love it, love it, love it. We have a-
Is that district wide or on just some campuses?
Everywhere, all of them. Some of them have a QR code outside, so you scan the QR code so you can pull it up. But at elementary, they just have them hanging on a look, on a hook, so you can just pick them up and look at them. So it's great. Another thing we did, we had a district-wide book study on the Fundamental Five Revisited. So we did the Fundamental Five years ago. It's a book about good instructional strategies. They wrote a new book that really deals with a lot of the changes we've seen in education since COVID and since the shutdown. And it's, it's great. We, every single teacher in our district has read it. They've done book studies on their campuses. And, and I've asked, I've asked our administrators and our instructional facilitators, are we seeing the fruits of our labor? And they all said, yes, absolutely. It's one of the best things we've done is get everybody on the same page, speaking the same language. So those are a few things that we've put in place that we're already starting to see like major impact on. So our second goal that we are working on this year, and you're going to see a lot of the strategies repeated because doing one or two things really well is more important than doing a whole lot of things mediocre. So our second goal is that at least 80% of our teachers will be observed delivering high-quality instructional lessons, including higher order thinking skills, problem solving, questioning strategies, and see students engaging and learning on their own. So we're going to go in and watch teachers. And so we're doing instructional rounds, which is where our entire administrative team goes to one campus and we walk through classrooms and then we talk about what we saw and we, we give feedback to the principals and, and we kind of just work together as a team to say, okay, how are things going? What can we do to help you improve? So we're going to do that on every campus twice this year, beginning of the year and end of the year. We've got the addition of our early literacy coordinator, Ms. Grimsley. She's working with our lower level reading teachers and our administrators. The impact she's already having is substantial. Not only has it taken a lot off of my plate and the principal's plates, but it has given a huge resource to our reading teachers. So they are already just benefiting from the addition of that one position and the help that she's being able to give them. So that's another piece of that, that puzzle. Again, I talked about the textbooks and the resources. We're just trying to find the right pieces to fit in, to give our teachers what they need to be successful, to build lessons that are engaging. And we're using those design days for the purpose of designing high-quality lessons. And we're sitting with our teachers and we're working together as a team vertically, talking about how can we make better lessons that are going to engage students in the learning? So, so that's our second goal. And our third goal is that we're going to have a 10% increase in the number of opportunities for families, community members, and business representatives to interact with the school district. We just want to open that door. Volunteering is a big, big push for our family and community engagement committee. School, Parent Square, holy cow, Parent Square has been a game changer. It has been amazing. That, that resource has changed the communication within our district so much. So kudos to the people that brought Parent Square to us. It's been great. Our publication is going out. We're excited about that. That's going to put information about Godly in every hand of every person that lives in our area. We're going to communicate about the things that we're doing. So I think that we're just going to continue to see people learning more about us and who we are and wanting to come in and engage with us, whether they're a mentor, a business partner, whatever it is. We have opportunities there for people to come in and work with us. So anyway, I just wanted to hit a few high points. I know that was probably more high points than y'all probably needed, but I didn't get to talk last month, so I wanted to talk this month. Did you have any questions about the plan, what you saw? Again, we have another couple of weeks before we put the final seal of approval on it. And even after that, it's not like can't be changed. If we see a need, we'll add it and we'll continue to meet that need. But we want to know where our money is going, where our title funds are going, where our time and our energy are going to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the district. So any questions?
Yes, ma'am. So first of all, thank you for walking through. And to echo what you said a minute ago about the process, I'm very glad we have the process we do so that it gives a little bit of time to read and digest. So I do have, maybe it's just me not fully understanding the problem statement, number one. I know you walked through it, but I guess I'm still maybe a little dense or something here, but but I interpret this that we're basically saying that because the students are not consistently demonstrating high level of performance, that the teachers can't push them. And it's like, I got an operation in one, in one hand that's not going well, so I can't do something over here. It, it doesn't resonate with me, so.
So I think what we're seeing is if, when you ask a student to perform a basic, write, write a sentence and they struggle to write a sentence, it's harder for you to then say, okay, well, write me a paragraph. Well, I couldn't write a sentence for you. How can I write a paragraph? So if we can get to a point where our students are showing us that our students can write sentences, go walk through the kindergarten hallway at any of these elementaries, they can do it. But when they get to high school, sometimes they are a little less motivated, but if they're writing about something they're passionate about and they're interested in, they can do it. Or if they're in a different mode of, in a mode of communication. So sometimes we see students not showing us what they can do, even though they can do it. They aren't showing us that they can do it. And so teachers are hesitant to push when they feel like they're already struggling. I can't make them do anything more difficult because they're struggling with the basics. So we want to find a way to balance this, to get students to show us what they really can do at every grade level, and I'm not blaming high school. This is not a high school problem. But when we, when we feel like kids are struggling at a basic problem, we struggle to ask them to do more rigorous problems. So we need to find a way that they can show us what they know and engage in higher level thinking that the teachers are comfortable with and the kids are comfortable with. And I know it sounds, I had this conversation with curriculum directors the other day and they said, if you can solve productive struggle, you'll be a millionaire because it's, it's a hard problem that we, we don't know exactly what kids know if they choose not to show us. And we just have to find a way to let them know, hey, show us what, you tell me how you know what you're doing. It doesn't have to be a worksheet. It doesn't have to be IXL. It doesn't have to be this. How can we engage kids in talking to us or, or demonstrating through a project or some other way to show us that they can do hard things so that we will have confidence that they can do hard things?
So absolutely right that productive struggle is not just an educational thing. I have the same problem in my work environment. A motivated employee is by all means the most productive employee. So I guess that's a part I struggle with the words that are here.
Okay.
That I completely agree that a student that is motivated with the right motivation to write, they're going to write you a novel.
All the things.
They're not going to just write a sentence. And I guess I, I struggle with the words that are here to interpret that, that particular position, that we're trying to figure out a way to motivate them as opposed to push them.
Okay.
So I don't know, I would just ask, maybe we relook at the words. It's a living document. You said it.
Absolutely.
So, you know, maybe we can make it clarified.
Yes.
Thank you.
A question-
So Craig, would it-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I had a question. What you were saying that some of these students struggle with basic skills and so they're not able to push them to more critical skills. Do we have paras or some kind of intervention that's helping the students master those basic skills?
We have lots and lots of things, yes. And that's something, trying to find just the right thing. And sometimes a para is the best thing for a student because they can explain it in a different way. They can sit in a small group and pull them and work with them on manipulatives, things like that. Sometimes it's just having another student explain it to them is even better because they speak the same language. So yes, we are trying lots of things. One thing we are trying to do though is train our paras on some of the additional strategies. So if they are pulling kids, they know some of the verbiage that we're using and know exactly what, what language we want those kids to hear to, to be able to go to that next level. But yes, ma'am, we're trying everything we can find. And I will say finding paras right now is very, very difficult. We are struggling to find personnel to even fill all of our para spots, but anyone we have, we're using them in the classroom 100%.
And also I heard that you were having a hard time finding curriculum textbooks. I know when I was in high school, like McGraw-Hill was one of the providers. Do they not write textbooks anymore?
So they do. And we have McGraw-Hill and most of them are online and we buy seats. The problem is we haven't had to pay for those textbooks in years and years because we've had an adoption under, we've been under, and so it's always paid for upfront. But we don't typically use like books anymore. We use an online platform so kids can access it in different ways. We may have a class set of textbooks, but the problem is those textbooks haven't been printed in years. Like they're probably 10 years old or more. So some of the material isn't relevant to students, it's not interesting. So we find that the online pieces are a little more up to date. The pictures are more up to date, the stories, things like that. So that's a big struggle, not only just having the materials, but having stuff that's up to date and relevant and interesting for students.
And with the online, I noticed in the high school needs assessment that students were losing engagement due to technology. So being on a Chromebook, I see that being a distraction. How are we helping those students to be engaged and not distracted with those Chromebooks?
Yes. Also, a big piece that we saw after COVID, when we switched to virtual and then tried to come back, we're really encouraging teachers to find balance. I will encourage you, I'll tell you, if you ever walk around the history department, they've, they are working on posters and I really have seen so many less students on a Chromebook this year than I have in the past few years. The teachers have become very good at balancing. They get on and they do their project, they close them and then they go and they talk and they write and they perform. And that's what we're looking for, are those opportunities for kids to get up from the desk, get out from behind the computer or the book and go talk to people and go write. I was in here the other day, Ms. Trewitt's students, they were everywhere. They had their cameras out, they were perform, they were videotaping. Kids are not going to learn, they're not going to work in an atmosphere where they just sit at a computer all day. I mean, they might, but they're going to have that opportunity to get up and go. They have to learn to go talk to people, to engage with people. And so I'm, I'm going to say this year, we've started to see that shift away from just kids on Chromebooks all day long. They don't stay charged long enough anymore for them to get too much out of it. So we get a lesson in, they have to go plug them back in and we go do something else. So it's, it's really, we're working on that. We really are, so, yes.
And I think a lot of it's, to answer kind of both your questions, it's about lesson design because the, the lesson shouldn't be working on the Chromebook. Chromebook's just a tool. And if you, if you have an engaging lesson that's, that's relevant and the student wants to do it and they want, because that's, it's not that they can't do the basic stuff. They're not showing us the basic stuff because if they've got some boring worksheet, they're like, eh, and we're just not seeing it. So I think that's what I heard you say. It's about better lesson design. And then if they want to use the Chromebook or they want to use paper and pen or they want to use a cap, whatever, they'll use whatever tool they want to use. But I think it, I think what I'm hearing, it's about improving our lesson design.
Yeah, and giving teachers time to really sit down and talk to each other and ask, what worked for you? What's working, you know? Asking the kids, I heard teachers the other day say, we don't know what kids are interested in. We haven't had a chance to talk to them and ask them. Okay, let's do that. Let's ask the kids what they're interested in. Let's find some common ground and engage them in some, just let them tell us what they want to learn about. We know they can't write all the curriculum, they can't drive all the lessons, but if we can find some pieces that they really want to learn about, they will take algebra and they will go make it happen because they want to learn something. Yes. It's not easy, but it's what we're here for. It's fun. I love it. Okay, any other questions? We're going to continue to polish on this and keep working on it. Next month, when I bring it to you, it's going to be the deal. All right? I think I'm next, so I'm not going to-
Yeah, eight D, first, this will be the first review of the Godly ISD Campus Improvement Plans.
Yes. So again, I'm going to stand up here for the principals so y'all don't have to hear them tell you the exact same thing over and over again. We are at the needs assessment level for our campus improvement plans. So once we have our district plan, our big goals for the district, they are all talking to their campus improvement committees, they're talking to their teachers, they're doing classroom walkthroughs, they're gathering the data and the feedback, looking at last year's surveys and their identity- year's surveys, and they're identifying where their strengths and weaknesses are on each campus. And then from there, next month, when they come to you, they will have their goals ready, and they'll each come up and present what their goals are. But hopefully you had a chance to look over their needs assessment, so if there were any questions, I'll be happy to answer them or ask the principal to come up and answer. But for the most part, they're going through the same process we did at the district level on their campuses, and just, we'll just work through that three-month cycle with them as well.
I did have a question. Are we doing anything differently this year than we've done in years past with the needs assessment? And, you know, if you keep doing the same thing over and over again.
Yes.
Sometimes you don't yield the results that you'd like. So have there been any changes in how you guys are working through this, and what would those changes be?
Absolutely. And I want to say, I think we are, this is probably the most comprehensive we've ever done. So last year was the first year that we actually had to do the whole, like, we had to do things differently because when we opened three elementary schools, the rules changed. So we went through the needs assessment process that the state lines out for us last year, but we, we were, it was crazy, crazy town last year at the beginning of the year. So we did as much as we could, we looked at our data, we talked to our teachers. But I will say this year, I think we've done probably the best needs assessment that we've ever done because we know the process. We're talking to our, our site-based committees, we're talking to our teams, we're having PLCs on every campus, we're in the classrooms, we're doing instructional rounds, we're gathering data from our map testing and our STAR, we're looking at our TELPOS data, we are pulling in all these little pieces and really asking ourselves the questions. I think the SEBAS process that we have done has been the most phenomenal needs assessment we could ever do because we're tying every single thing right back to those pillars and asking ourselves the questions. It's becoming truly part of our DNA. I told Mr. Carnes the other day, I said, it's so exciting to have seen us come from this big idea in the sky of SEBAS and all these pillars. It's, we are living it right now. Like, we are living it in the moment, it's part of every conversation we have. So I truly feel like everything we've done for the past 18 months has led us to this point of them looking at data through a critical lens of student learning and progress and student engagement, and what are we doing well and what are we not doing well? Our principals, at least at the elementary, have had a full year with their staff and their parents and their PTOs and, and all these people that, that pour into the campus. So they know what their needs are now. This time last year, they didn't know. They knew one grade, you know, one little grade band of kids. Now they can look at a whole campus and say, okay, yeah, we can see where our needs are and how are we different from them? You know, every campus is different. So we've done quite a few things differently this year. We're using a software platform. This is our second year, so we've got data to look at from last year, data to look at from this year. We have survey data from two years that are exactly alike that we can compare to. I really feel like this is the best needs assessment we've ever done because we're actually comparing apples to apples, not apples to pineapples. And so it's, it's been a good, good process. I don't know, principals, do y'all have any other feedback on that?
With the data, how are we making sure that that data is safe and it's not being shared with third parties?
So the platform we use is 806 Technologies, and it's one of the biggest platforms in the state as far as this campus needs assessment, the district needs assessment. And they have multiple security pieces in place. We actually met with their vice president the other day, and they, they house it in a server that's completely separate. You know, each, each district has their own little piece of the pie, and it all goes through our safety nets and their safety nets. Of course, a lot of the data, STAR data, things like that, it's just big level, it's high-level numbers, it's not individual student data, so there's no confidentiality that would be breached. It's the same data that's available on the, the state website. So I can't, I can't think of any data that would be in our plan that wouldn't be public since this does go on the public website, but they do have security protocols just to make sure passwords and things are, are safe. But yeah, this is a pretty, pretty public piece of documentation, so most of the stuff in here is open. Any other pieces of questions or information? All right, the principals will have their goals for you next month.
Thank you, Dr. Cotto. All right, 8E will consider an approval of resolution supporting a culture of voting.
So Texas law requires school districts educate our kids about voting and the voting process. And as a school district, we believe that we can promote and protect a culture of voting, not only with our kids, but with our employees and community as well. I think we pass this resolution every year that I've been here. We usually do this in September, so administration recommends we approve a resolution supporting a culture of voting.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Dear? I'll now entertain them.
A motion to approve the resolution supporting a culture of voting as presented and recommended.
A motion by Craig, a second by Marissa. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 8F is a discussion on place election method for a school board trustee election. This will be informational only.
So this is for discussion, we've talked for several years as we get low, as we get larger, transitioning into going from at-large to, to places. Most larger school districts are, have places, most smaller school districts, like we are now. Just wanted to put it back on here just to revisit. Know if you guys had any questions about it?
If we're, if we're looking at doing places, would that be geographical locations?
No, ma'am. It was just, just each board member, basically each board position would have a place assigned to it, wouldn't be geograph, geographic positions. No, ma'am.
Okay.
So if, if you were signing, signing up to run for the board, you wouldn't, wouldn't sign up just to run for the board, you would sign up for a specific place? That's all it is, not a geographic.
I just noticed that some of the districts, their places are for a geographic location.
Some of the large districts, Fort Worth, Houston, a lot of those, I would recommend staying away from that because that gets pretty political. The way we're doing it now, everyone in the district can still vote for every place. When you have a geographic, you could, you're only voting for your, your geographic location.
What kind of transition, if we choose to do that, what kind of transition would we see or have to endure? Like.
It's just you guys making the resolution, and then we would pick numbers, or well, we wouldn't pick numbers, well, yeah, I guess we would. We'd pick numbers because nothing else would change, the, the order in which, you know, we'd have two, two and three still on that same cycle. That would stay the same, it's just each, each one of you, I guess, each position would be numbered, given a place number, one through seven. And we need to do it 60 days before the election. That's about it.
I do know, I do know that Waukesha Hachi ISD had shifted from at-large to a place election, and an incumbent intentionally did not run for their seat but ran for another incumbent seat. And so there was some targeting that happened there. So I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
That we're aware of that happening and that places could make that an issue.
So I heard you say that we would need to make that decision 60 days before the election. Would we not need to make it sooner than that so that when individuals are signing up, our, our signup window for, to be a candidate.
Yes, yeah, you're right.
Seems to be earlier than the 60 days.
Yes, you would.
So our timeline is probably, if we choose to go that route, would be somewhere in January, December, January timeframe is my thought. Is that right?
I would say yes, because when do you?
Because usually, I believe our.
The first day to sign up.
Candidate signup period is Jan, mid-January.
January.
Roughly mid-Fbruary.
Correct. The, yep. You're correct.
Also, our city council is an at-large election. I wonder if that would confuse voters because you have different election methods for the city as opposed to the ISD?
The method wouldn't exactly change though because you, like, any member of the district, if you lived in district, could, you could vote, you would just be voting for places. So I think, I mean, they'd still get to vote, like, anybody could vote for anyone.
Right. I just mean, the city uses at-large for the city council. And so if the ISD is doing places, I just wonder if that might be confusing to citizens.
Do we have other districts that have recently transitioned from an at-large to a per-place methodology?
I don't know about how recently, but I do know any of the larger districts around us, Cleburne, Grand Bridge, Joshua, Lito, Burleson, Alvarado, that are all places. The only ones that are still at-large, technically, we're all still at-large, but that's what we're using right now. The only ones at-large are, are us, Grandview, Keene, and Rio right now. I don't know about who's recently transitioned. So just something to ponder and think about, just wanted to bring it back up as we're, another, another thing to think about as we grow.
So can we have this brought up for discussion again somewhere before the December timeframe? If we're going to choose, that seems to me to be the timeline that we would have to make that decision.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My, my recommendation would be for everyone to come up with a pros and cons list over the next 30 days and revisit October.
Sure.
Just stay ahead of the curve there. Any other questions for Dr. Dear? All right, 8G will consider a change order for Phase 2 construction.
All right, Aubrey, I'll let you take it away.
Last month, we brought to you a change order for 951,000 roughly for Godly High School Phase 2, to basically reimburse the owner's contingency for some conformance set items and items related to JSU, Johnson County. We mistakenly left out the contractor's fee, bonds, and insurance in that change order. So we just need to make a revision to that. The total amount of the change order will not change, it'll remain 951,000. A little over 48,000 will be allocated for contractor's costs, and the remaining 900, almost 903,000 will go into owner's contingency. So we're just reducing the amount that's going to owner's contingency, but the total amount of the change order stays the same. As far as the contractor's fee, it is based on the amount that is actually spent. And as you know, owner's contingency, it's for various items along the way. If you spend it all, they get their fee allocated towards, so we're allocating around $48,000 for that. If you only spend half of the funds in this change order, at the end of the project, those funds go back to you and their fee is proportional to what is actually spent. So again, change order value does not change, we're just making sure the contractors' costs are allocated within that.
And I apologize for bringing this back to you. We probably could have just taken care of this and figured it out, but in the, in the lens of transparency, we wanted to bring this back to you so you knew exactly what was going on, just because where we are in the project. So this is just for transparency's sake, to let you know exactly where the money's going.
Questions or comments?
Just because I wasn't a part of this before, is that contractor fee standard?
Yeah, it's written into their contract, a certain percentage, and it's, this includes their fee, bonds, and insurance, so it's not all fee. But yeah, those are contractually, percentages per the original contract, which are standard in the industry.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order for Phase 2 construction as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Krista. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Aubrey. 8H will consider the resolution by Godly ISD affirming the nominations for candidates for the Board of Directors of the Central Appraisal District of Johnson County for the 24-25 term.
So in Texas, appraisal districts are governed by a Board of Directors, and those Board of Directors are nominated, that's what we're doing today, and then later voted on by the taxing entities inside those districts. So for this, this item and the next, this is Johnson County, the next is Hood County, we're just nominating candidates for the board. These are the four, four out of the five sitting board members are still willing to run, so those, that is what our recommendation is, to nominate those, those individuals.
Dr. Dear, was the number of votes different on purpose? And if so, why?
It's in.
For the one individual.
It's an odd number.
So we had to give somebody an extra vote?
Okay. Yeah. It's, and, and.
No reason that person got it, just.
Gave the one extra. And we have 229 votes out of a possible 5,000 of the county, so.
I'd like to make a note that that's like 4.6% of the total votes, so.
Yes, it is.
It's a very small portion.
Yep.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to nominate Toby Ford with 57 votes, Dawn Beeson with 57, Brenda Webb with 57, and Vance Castle for 58 votes for candidates for the Board of Directors of the Central Appraisal District of Johnson County for 24-25 term as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Terry, a second by Krista. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. In talking with some citizens that have been working legislatively for property tax relief, there is some legislative work that's been done for members. To nominate their own CAD board members. And since I don't see any of those names on this list, I'm going to be voting no in support of the work that those citizens have been doing.
All right. Any further discussion? So we have a motion by Terry, a second by Krista. All those in favor? Motion passes six to one.
And the next is for Hood County. We, we recommend Eddie Rodriguez, Ron Sutton, Rick Frye, and Monty Lewis.
Are there any questions for Dr. Dear on the Hood County Appraisal District nominations?
I just wanted to explain the reason for voting no again, it's just because I didn't see the names of the taxpayers that are working to elect their own board members on this list.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to nominate Eddie Rodriguez with six votes, Ron Sutton with six votes, and Rich Frye with five votes, Monty Lewis with five votes for candidates for the Board of Directors of Hood County Appraisal District for 24-25 term. And again, I'll note that, that our votes are .4% in the Hood County region.
A motion by Terry, a second by Dennis. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six to one. 8J will consider approving the amendment to the communications system agreement.
All right, Chief, take it away.
Good evening, Dr. Dear, Board of Trustees. Tonight, I come to you with an amendment to a communications system agreement. Essentially, in January of '23, Godly ISD entered into a communications system agreement with Johnson County. The agreement pertains to governing bodies performing governmental functions necessary to the benefit of the public, specifically with regard to public safety, voice, radio communications. At the time of the original agreement, Johnson County set forth an annual subscriber unit fee in the amount of $24.20 per month, per subscriber radio for all active radio IDs issued to Godly ISD. Currently, there are two. This agenda item is an amendment to the communications system agreement. Effective October 1st, 2023, Johnson County has amended the annual subscriber unit fee to $27.89 a month, an increase of $3.69 per subscriber radio for all active radio IDs issued to Godly ISD. Still, we currently have two, but as will increase to five additionally radios as Godly ISD Police Department adds radios and hires more officers. This subscriber fee essentially covers equipment, infrastructure, licensing fees, software, as well as Johnson County facilitating and providing the service. So as they have small, minimal increases in their costs, obviously, they spread that out to agencies and using their, their dispatching radio services. My recommendation would be to approve and sign the communications agreement amendment. My recommendation would be to approve and sign the Communications Agreement Amendment. Any questions?
Yeah, on this amendment, have we, how have we accounted for any cost differential?
Essentially, we're going off of the increases that they're setting forth with costs to their equipment, their infrastructure, license fees, all those things that I went over. So if you would like, I can ask them for a breakdown of that to the cent, or...
I guess I'll direct the question to our financial director. So how have we accounted for cost delta in our budget?
I believe the budget for the Safety Department and the Police Department was built with that increase in mind. The budget was built with that in mind.
Oh, okay, thank you. That's all I was trying to make sure is that this amendment wasn't...
It's only about a hundred dollars a year per, for two radios.
Okay.
Good enough, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well now, consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the Communications System Agreement as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, a second by Marissa, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
8K will consider the Student Health Advisory Committee members, otherwise known as SHAC, for the twenty-two, is that twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yeah. Last week, last month, we talked about what the SHAC does and what they do for the district. So I've got the list presented to you, there are seventeen members, ten of those are parents in the district, two students, one community member who is a retired healthcare worker, and we have four staff members. And so I would present those to you for considered, to be recommended for the district. We will start next month, meet, we'll probably meet in November. We've been tasked with a few things from the state. Fentanyl instruction, I guess, curriculum on the dangers of fentanyl. So I received that from TEA last week, so we'll hit the ground running next month and start looking at that. And to echo what Dr. Cottle said, no support, not, there's not a curriculum out there that I've found. I've reached out to TEA, and I've heard crickets from their Curriculum Division on it. So I'm hoping our SHAC members can help me research this and find the best curriculum for our students to talk about the dangers of fentanyl, and we'll be going through that. We're also planning on a health fair again in the spring, so we have a lot of work to do, but we're going to, I think we're going to, I know we're going to do great things, and I think these members will be excellent for our district.
I have a question, our notes say this is for twenty-two, twenty-three school year, isn't it, for twenty...
It's twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah, okay.
And again, the parents, the number of parents have to be more by law than any other. They have to be more on the committee, and we're at about sixty percent of our parents on the SHAC membership, so we've met that criteria.
Question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Does the, the parent makeup provide a enough diversity that is comparative to that of our district?
I mean, I believe so, yes. I tried to go, when we got the, most of these parents renewed last year, and I tried to get from all campuses, many of them are elementary, but they have kids, you know, they have friends and stuff that have kids at different campuses. So I asked them to go out and get information and gather back. So I think, I know last year, they did a great job of getting information from the community and bringing it back to our membership. So I think my answer to your questions, yes. Thank you.
I noticed that the student members changed from last year to this year. I also went back and checked how often the students attended the meetings last year, and it was a little less than desirable. So are we going to try to encourage meeting times, that those students can attend the meetings maybe a little bit easier, or...
I hope so. I mean, it's very difficult to get everybody on the same schedule, that was, it's a huge challenge. With Ms. Jokel being here full-time, I think she'll be able to help me do that and engage, especially, I know at the high school, the high school counselors got students very fast for me, so I'm hoping I can send reminders to them to remind the students to come. But yeah, it's a challenge to get everybody on the same schedule. Sometimes I just have to set it and say, here we go, and try not to conflict with district events. But it's challenging to get everybody on the same schedule.
Any other questions or comments?
And this would be my recommendation.
We'll entertain a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve the Student Health Advisory Committee as recommended for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll second.
A motion by Terry, a second by Marissa, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. 8L is a discussion and possible approval of the resolution of the Board to employ or accept volunteer chaplains.
All right, good evening. Yes, so Senate Bill seven-sixty-three allows a district to employ a chaplain instead of a school counselor to perform the duties of a school counselor. So a chaplain employed under this provision is not required to be certified by the State Board for Educator Certification. And Senate Bill seven-sixty-three requires that a Board take a vote on whether to adopt a policy authorizing a campus to employ or accept as volunteers chaplains, and that's to perform the duties of a school counselor. Now with that being said, to be clear, we have a great relationship with our local faith leaders. You know, we've seen, you know, seen them here, see you at the pole is Wednesday, involved in FCA, Baccalaureate, I know Dr. Dear meets with them periodically. And so we have that relationship, it is a good relationship, and we continue to, or we will work to continue that relationship. And also to be clear, that in the event of a tragedy, knock on wood, hopefully that doesn't happen, but should it happen, they would be available to students, continue to be available to students as needed. So that relationship is still there, and it will not be affected. But I did attach a letter from Texas Chaplains, which at that ti, it's grown, but at the time that I printed it, there were thirteen pages of signatures from chaplains across the state of Texas that do not recommend this. They note in there that they are not trained to be school counselors. You just heard all of the things that Nikki Nick spoke of, that our counselors are highly involved in. And chaplains, they know, in their letter indicate that they are not trained to be school counselors. So we had two options, to formally permit chaplains to serve as counselors for the district, or, well, there was also option two, if for districts that were already, that already had that policy in place that did not apply to us, or option three, the district will not permit chaplains to serve as counselors for the district. And so our recommendation is option three, that we will not permit chaplains to serve as school counselors.
Mr. Carnes, how does this affect, how would we document this in our policies?
So, once, once we, if, if y'all, whichever direction that y'all go, then yes, then we would, this then, this came through from our policy consultant, and then this will be sent to them and placed in our, placed in our policy, in our regulations, I should say.
So it won't be a part of our local policies, or it will be? Or am I misinterpreting which, where it would be documented?
So... Where officially it would be documented, so this is, this is a resolution. And so then this resolution, just like any of the other, you know, a resolution to, for culture of voting or any of the other resolutions, so you have a copy of that resolution, you know, whereas, 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 and then, then adopted, and then so this would be then sent back to Carolyn Austin, who's our policy consultant with Tasby.
Is this something similar to the culture of voting that we would have to renew yearly?
Not, not to my knowledge. Now, I do believe that should something change, and let's say that we couldn't find a counselor to save our lives, we could come back and revisit this to be able to say that, okay, we adopt a resolution that we could do it at a later date. But to my knowledge, this is not an annual thing. Now, this is brand-new, I might find out this time next year that it is. But to my knowledge, this is a one-time adoption of this resolution, and then, but we could always go back, if y'all decided that we wanted to do something different, we could go back and change that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea what, where this reasoning came from, where this came from? No?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll motion to decline the resolution regarding Godly ISD to accept school chaplains as volunteers.
A motion by Terry, a second by Marissa, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Carnes.
Okay, yes, sir.
Oh, no, wait, you're up there again. 8M, consider adoption of Godly ISD District Policy DEC Local.
Okay, so more statutory changes became effective September first and requires districts with commissioned peace officers to provide certain types of leave. And so HB four-seven-one requires a district to provide paid leave to police officers. And so with that, they gave us two options. One option is to extend the leave of absence that they can use, accumulated leave, which includes state leave, local leave, any comp time or vacation time, if applicable. Or option two, that the district shall extend the leave of absence and not to exceed a certain number of days. So we have, we do have numerous leaves, as noted, local leave, state leave, assault leave, there is mental health leave, there is quarantine leave, there's also application to the sick pool, which could be up to a maximum of forty-five days. So we have a lot of things in place to take care of our people. And so with that, our recommendation is that the district shall not extend the leave of absence. But the, but the police officer can use accumulated leave, state leave, local leave, any comp time or vacation leave, if applicable, if necessary.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Godly ISD District Policy DEC Local as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Krista, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 8N will consider amendment to the District of Innovation Plan, and this is informational only.
Correct, this is just information only. So Dana came to me Friday, I believe it was, Friday morning, and said, we have made the discovery that we need something in place. This is in relation to our Teach Worthy, our Grow Your Own. So to be able to use them, we need a compliance piece here, and what that would, to be able to use them, well, to be able to code it correctly in PEMS, which is the Public Education Information Management System, so that she doesn't get what, get is what's called a fatal, so that we can code things correctly. We need a piece in place for our Teach Worthy, Grow Your Own. The way for us to accomplish that is through the District of Innovation. Right now, in the District of Innovation, we, under certification requirements for teachers, we have some flexibility for CTE teachers who have experience in a field or for foreign languages, so for native speakers, and, and, you know, so some of those can be hard to fill and find. So Forney ISD has done this, and we contacted them to see, make sure, and they had the same language as we did with regard to CTE and foreign language, but they had, and I bolded it there, but are not limited to. And that provides them a little extra layer of flexibility so that we can use our, grow our own candidates, that through the District of Innovation, we don't get a fatal in the, in PEMS. Now, what I have to do is, though, I have to take this to the District Improvement Committee first, so it has to pass through them. Excuse me. So it has to pass through them. Once, once it comes through the District Improvement Committee, then I can bring it back to you for your approval so that we can, that we can do this. One of the catches, though, that we discovered is that her submission for PEMS is due October nineteenth. The Board is not scheduled to meet until October twenty-fifth, I believe, or twenty, twenty-something. And so twenty-third, is it? Okay, so unfortunately, that is after. So it would take either changing the regular scheduled Board meeting, or we would be asking you for, for a single agenda item so that we can have that in place prior to her submission on October nineteenth. I tried to see if that was flexible for her, but it is in, written in stone. So just information only that we want to bring that to you.
Right, bringing this to you guys now, and we'll probably do a special Board meeting with one item on the agenda to approve this. We just wanted you guys to have the opportunity to hear it and ask any questions you might have about it. But it's just, it's just adding but are not limited to, right?
But, that's the only thing that we're, yeah, we're just adding but not limited to, so that we have some flexibility for our Grow Our Own to employ them.
Any questions for Mr. Carnes?
I just wanted to make sure that if we have teachers that are not certified, that we're not creating more of a problem with some of these other problem statements of not allowing these students to have higher cognitive levels and not meeting their unique needs. I just want to make sure that having teachers teaching that aren't certified is not going to complicate that issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right, the time is eight forty-eight PM, and the Board will now move into closed session for a short time. We'll be convening in closed session under Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-two, which is discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We've done it online before. All right, the time is 9:10 PM. The board will reconvene in open session. There will be no action taken related to closed session items. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Terry, a second by Krista to adjourn. If there are no objections, the board will stand adjourned at 9:10 PM. Thank you all.